To order this meeting of the board of directors, will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Um, just a couple of announcements this evening, Mr. Futter is not with us. He has a work obligation with his excuse. And we met an executive session for thirty minutes prior to the board meeting to discuss. They never pay attention at the time, two, three personnel matters and a safety matter, sort of, okay? That brings us to citizens comments to the board on agenda items. There are no citizens in your room. Is there any online comment?
There are no online comments.
Okay, then that brings us to board representatives comment. So first, welcome back. I'll start with you, Mr. Wetzel.
Thank you. Um, just want to start thanking Chris just for all of our collaboration and help with the transition. The staff of Kelly, they've been phenomenal, just meeting with them, getting our heads wrapped around things and preparing for another year. And I think overall, the amount of professional development and trainings our staff are putting on for other members of the staff or attending. I think there's a lot of excitement as they've learned more about different strategies and skills and ways to teach our kids. And I think the knowledge base of our teachers is growing. And I think that's a really amazing thing that will benefit our students, having that common language, that common understanding of just really solid research-based pedagogy. So I'm really excited about that. And the only other thing for right now, I just want to thank the PSA. They are paying for school supplies for our students K to five. So the teachers list that used to go home asking for different supplies. They're paying for it K to five, which is amazing. And I think overall, they've just been so supportive and willing to help and wanting to do anything they can really just to ease different burdens and create opportunities for our students. Yes, students can still bring their own because I know that is a big deal and kids like to do their shopping. But just wanted to give a shout out to them and thank them for that.
Thanks, Mr. W.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Wetzel as well for helping with the transition to Lindtown. You know, we were talking in advance and coordinating schedules and all those kinds of things. And I think it's worked very well over the summer. It's been great to meet many of the Lindtown staff and also to welcome our new staff to the district. Having them come in and it's a little tough with some of the air conditioning that's going on, but they're still coming in and having the chance to meet a little bit and be able to understand what their roles can be. And, and again, what Eric said about the training, I was able to sit in on the logic of English training and just how, how willing the, the teachers are to not just attend the training, but they're really excited about many of the training opportunities that they've had this summer. So I'm excited to see how that's going to be applied. And then finally, I just want to thank, you know, Kim Nebiker for holding down the, the office over the summer and to our custodians for just waiting till there's a room ready and then they rush in and they clean it and they're getting the buildings ready for the opening. So, thank you.
Mr. Rosen.
Want to say thank you to the high school office staff for the graciousness. They housed the middle school office for the past since the end of June, really. And we're back into the middle school office and being able to be in the building every day and see the massive amount of work that's being done by the builders, but the extreme progress they're making is such a difference even from Monday to today. So there's no doubt we'll be ready to roll on time when the time comes. I can tell you that my teachers are chafing it a bit to get in the building. They've been out of the building since the school year ended. And they are really anxious and ready, the uptick in communication from them. And just I can tell they're ready. And I get in the same feeling from parents as well. As parents are completing their online updates, that comes with questions, not only about the updates themselves, but about like scheduling and things like that within the building. But they're also dropping off like their physical forms for athletics and dropping off things like educational trip forms. And, and so, so I know parents are ready for the year to start as well. I had to move our open house orientation to a couple of weeks later than we typically do, but I hope to get a information packet or newsletter out to sixth grade parents to make the transition a little bit easier, to answer a few more questions, maybe have a few visuals in there so that they're not knocking on the door on that first day, not knowing where to go. We'll make sure that that that's in their minds of where they're going and make them a little bit more comfortable before they come onto campus. Josh?
Good evening, everybody. So school's right around the corner and band camp was last week. So that's definitely like the beginning start of everything. So it was great to see the students back. It was great to see the directors helping to perform. It was enjoyable to hear the music. It was enjoyable to see them collaborate and hone in their skills together. They were working on pieces that they're going to feature this year, music of Adele, Whitney Houston, Kelly Clarkson and Sheryl Crow. So it was really enjoyable to see kind of that energy back in the building again before we get started here. And I also want to thank the individuals who volunteered throughout the week for lunches and bringing in the drinks and all the snacks that were available to them. So it's really nice to see it again.
As everybody has kind of said that, you know, getting back into school spirit has definitely hit. I think we all feel it this week. Whether it's, as Mr. Rosen said, physical forms or scheduled questions or getting the parking permits, you know, all of those things. Our phones have been ringing nonstop this week. The doorbells picked up. But it's, it's brings that new excitement of a, of a new school year. I just want to say, yeah, we certainly had several staff that, that we had to replace at the high school, either through retirement or relocation. And I was really worried going into the summer. You know, just knowing the, the shortage and the decrease in teacher education programs and, you know, just how this, these last two years have affected that I can just and I think Josh can speak to this too. I am so thrilled with the quality of the people that we have on board. You know, and I just am really excited for them and for our staff because are already existing staff because I think that it's going to meld and mesh so nicely. And so to start the season or the summer with, you know, kind of the apprehension that I had and then to walk away at this point in the time, be like, yeah, yeah, for eighteen. Just a good feeling.
Great. And Mr. Long, welcome.
Thank you. I want to say thank, thank you first of all for hiring me and being in this position. So yes, and thank you to all the administrators as I've gotten activated over the last month plus here since I started July first. Everyone's been very welcoming and made me feel comfortable and feel at home. So it feels like a great place to be. Last Monday, we had, as far as athletics goes, last Monday, we had our fall sports information session that was well attended by parents and student athletes. Golf and football started practicing this Monday, this past Monday, and the rest of the fall sports will start on Monday, August fifteenth. And we have over three hundred students registered so far for fall sports through the family ID registration in grades seven through twelve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see everyone again. It's been a great summer, but I love the start of fall. Want to thank the high school for graciously allowing all of our programs that we host throughout this school summer to share their rooms and their space and helping us out, especially with E S Y and Kelly kickoff. I think things went really good with transportation and a shout out to our teachers who take three weeks out of their summer to dedicate themselves to support our students and really enriching the learning process. So great to kind of move on, but also start the school new school year. Like Paulo was saying, we do have lots of new staff that includes three new special education teachers, two, one coming to the high school, one going to Kelly, and then we're opening our IU classroom at Lindtown. So we have some great personnel coming on that I think are going to be great additions to our special team.
Great. Thank you. Thanks to all of you. Our presentation is the high school courses and sections report, which I
Alright, so, John, do you have that then to?
Yeah.
Put up. So the high school course selection, unusually in the past, we have done that earlier in the spring and it's of how many students have requested different courses. Because of the time of year when this is being done, I'm done, I'm letting you know like what actually has been scheduled in, but I did put a little disclaimer on there that we of course are adjusting schedules with change requests and things like that. So the numbers might fluctuate a little bit, but it follows the same format. But I'm actually going to ask John if he would scroll down to the end because this year there is something very different that we have not seen here at the high school that definitely impacts some of the things in the other schedule. If you notice, we have twenty-one students this year taking advantage of the ACE program at Bloomsburg. That's up five students from last year. And at SUN, we have thirty-seven students, which is up sixteen students. So to give you a little bit of an idea of just the shift and the change and people's perception of SUN, the additional programs that they have brought on and some changes. My first year at the high school, we had two students go to SUN. My second year at the high school, I think we had four students go to SUN. It was single, you know, digits for a lot of years. And it was a lot of people's efforts to, to turn these numbers and certainly as people were looking at the job market and, you know, where employment is and what trades are needed and what kind of income can come from that. The, the openness about going on to a technical school really just has changed to, you know, a much more positive. And I am just absolutely thrilled to see that number. I had the opportunity to have lunch with Mrs. Brousse the other day and got to share with her how many students are going and she literally teared up. She was so happy about that. And then the other thing that you'll see is the ACE STEM program, which is a two-year program for juniors and seniors. We have not had anyone, certainly with the pandemic, but even before that, really take advantage of that. They do the morning of their coursework during the high school and then the afternoon they do over at Bloom. So it's quite a commitment for the, the students, but I am excited that we actually have three juniors who are interested in that. And we do a co-op with transportation with Milton and Warrior Run because they all also have small number of students. So we transport or we'll be transporting over to Milton and then Milton will be doing the transportation to and from Bloomsburg because juniors a lot of times don't have, you know, got those driving privileges and things yet. So I'm just really excited about that. So when you consider that we have roughly one hundred and sixty students enrolled in the senior class. And right there, you've got fifty-eight students who are taking their courses offsite, plus a few seniors that are, that have been doing A school and would like to continue A school for their senior year. You know, we have over, well over sixty students from the senior class that are offsite. And so what I love is they're still connected to the school. So co-curriculars, you know, extracurricular activities and still gets to a part of that. But that certainly does flavor how many sections of each course you have, you know, some years you have a very small number of A students or SUN students. It just depends. So you don't really know until that final count comes out, but this is by far the most that we have offsite. So that does impact a little bit. You know, how many people requested and, and some availability and, and schedules. And I'll go through that just a little bit. So one of the, one course, John, going back up to the beginning, principles of design, that does not have enough students nor is there room in the instructor's schedule to offer that this year. Typically that and elements of design are both taught by Mrs. Amy, who is our halftime art teacher. She's only here in the afternoon. So instead of being able to offer a full course load, of course, she can only offer a half-day course load. So typically what we do is we alternate elements and principles and just go back and forth. You know, if there are students, you know, that, that would still like to take another art course and then this way, just by doing it in alternating years or every two years with one, we can get that in. Then when you go down to the next section, you'll see that these are the ones that were fewer than ten, but that we are still offering. So accounting two, we have seven students since we, but that is an increase since we made that a semester course. When it was a full year course, students didn't want to give up that full credit to do that. So I'm seeing that as an upward trend for the positive. So even though it looks like a low number, I truly view that as positive. French one, five and three, and German three have lower numbers. French five especially was affected by the number of students that are doing off-campus courses. Those would be seniors. And so when you have that number of students that are going offsite and, you know, when you only, you know, have so many feeding into it. French one, while it only says seven, that actually is an increase. We haven't offered French one here at the high school because we haven't had the numbers. Now, Mr. Rosen's middle school numbers in eighth grade for French, I believe, were they at thirty? And the, you know, you know, when they're requesting things are in. So I'm really hopeful that that'll be a nice feeder program. You know, into the high school with that realignment of how the, how we're doing the languages. That's been a request of our language teachers for years. And German three, those numbers always just kind of fluctuate a little bit. And again, you have students that might have switched from their middle school language to their high school language. So even though it's, you know, German three, it doesn't go up to five. So this would be like students maybe junior or senior year. So again, those students offsite, that can affect. Um, the one I think that we'll really want to watch is statistics and AP statistics. Again, completely affected, very, very much affected by the number of students going to AP this year. But I think what we need to look at, because those numbers have been a little bit lower, higher than what they are for next year, but, but they haven't been as high as we brought on some other math electives. So that's an area in the future that we'll want to look at, either offering one or both of them as an online elective, because that's how AP stats used to be done. Or combining the two of them into one section with differentiation. You know, there's, there's that, that possibility too. If it's, you know, certainly thirteen in the class. It's not like you're trying to do that with twenty-five in class. But again, that's because of increases in other math offerings. You know, that we've had and, and students going offsite. And then for music, one, we have six students taking that, which is about the same as what it normally is. We only have two students so far in, in AP or in music theory two, but that'll probably go up second semester. Maybe someone took theory one decides they want to take theory two in the second semester. And then AP music, we typically only offer one or two of those, but a lot of that is done independently. And the teacher is more of a consultant and things in that. And again, the teachers have room in their schedules for that. You know, it, it does get a little tricky at times because they're also doing all of the lessons besides the ensemble and things. But, you know, as our music program continues to grow and be strengthened, you know, we're also fortunate that Mr. Fortuna, we get to have here actually the entire B cycle, B day of the cycles instead of just a portion of the day. So it's the most we'll actually have had an orchestra teacher. So the next section again is just, oops, sorry, mine, I just lost it here. The next section is courses which can be, we could consider dropping from the program, but we've always been able to still offer it in some format or another, which is account one, accounting two, music theory two, music theory one and the AP. So if it's had less than ten, ten people in three years, we consider dropping it. But again, those are kind of specialty areas for some students and the accounting is rising. So then if we go down to new course enrollment, we can see, I just wanted to share a little bit what we're looking at with some of our new courses. AP seminar, which is offered for the first time in tenth grade. We have twenty-four students who are taking that, which is a perfect number for the first year of running that. So we're really excited to see that. Biology, grade nine, we have about forty students who have signed up for that. And again, I think that's really going to help with some of those conflicts and where kids get bottled in of trying to, you know, maybe double up on sciences, their sophomore year, plus still fit in all of the requirements. I think that's just for those students that know that something you know, along that pathway is what they're interested in. I think that really is really great for that. On the Spanish for Heritage speakers, we actually added another student to that today. So that will be up to twelve students. There are two students we are still working with their schedules. We're really excited about that class. And then the ELA for like English and Language Arts for our English language learners will probably be at about ten for that. Though I know that seems like a small number. When you are taking into account that those students have multiple levels of proficiency with the English language. And you're differentiating a lot within there. There are a lot of needs and a lot of different materials that need to be completed with that. What we looked at is on the WEADA, which tests language proficiency, the test that they need to take. It's broken down into different components. Usually what we see is our reading and listening or our, sorry, our listening and speaking being those areas where students pick up that acquisition the highest. So they might show up as a five or a six, which is the highest with their listening and their speaking skills. But then when they're trying to transfer that to reading, especially writing, that's even, that's the most difficult one. And you'll see students be at a far lower level. So this, we targeted those students that we know were like at a, at a level three proficiency, like or below. And then we're like the level threes, we're kind of looking at each student individually, but we know they can or have to have great accommodations. If they were just put into a regular English language arts class and then this way, they're getting that opportunity to get the support that they need. And then of course, with our existing ELL services, I really feel like we have a good triangulation of supports for, for students. Which is something that we really haven't had. This has been, for those of you that have been on the board, you know, servicing our ELL students has been an area of concern for quite a while. So I really think we have a really good approach for that. I also just wanted to highlight that AP computer science, we had one section with ten students. Last year, we have twenty-six so far this current year. So that is awesome to see in one year's time. Again, students can take that either as a math class, once they've completed algebra two, they could choose that as an option. Which has been great for students who are not interested in some of, you know, the calculuses and things like that. Boy, did they have a knack for AP computer science, or you could have the students in AP calc, taking computer science as an elective. So we've been really excited, you know, with, with that. So again, that's pretty much what we have that, like I said, the biggest jump is by far the number of students who are offsite. One year we did have, the class of twenty twenty, we had about one hundred of members of the class on site that year, which is about what this year is going to be. But the difference is, is that had class had thirty less students to start with. So it's a much higher percentage this year.
The stats, the stats classes, are they a semester or year long?
They're a year long.
Is there thought just possibly?
AP statue really would not be able to do semester wise. It would be, you know, way too much to put in. We could look at a semester stats. But then of course, you know, we'd have to change the credit and we don't have another half-credit math to balance that. So as long as our math credits, you know, are four, which I'm not saying that they shouldn't be, but with the number of math teachers, you know, Mr. Lu Pold, as we've also brought math analysis in, which a lot of our seniors are taking. You know, there, if, if we lost half of them, of a math teacher when Mr. Clark retired. So Mr. Bender, who had been teaching half algebra, half math and half science. When he moved up into Mr. Clark's spot, we replaced the science with a full-time position, but we didn't add like, you know, a half, that half position back into math. So where I'm actually more concerned is like our intermediate algebra, algebra two, some of those, the numbers of those classes are getting pretty, pretty high. So like the first priority would, would be looking at that instructor's spot that would be taken up by, by that into, by the stats and the filling in some of those other.
You said that those could possibly be done online?
Yes, that's how AP statue used to.
Is that set up now or not?
Um, it is not now. Um, you know, certainly our preferences, if we have the, you know, the option for students to take it with an instructor, that's, that's going to be like the, what the preference is. But again, if you go down to really low numbers, you know, and that was one of the things that I was watching, you know, that I had left the instructors now like, you know, hey, if this, this, I'm going to keep watching this over the summer, but if our intermediate alg and our alg two start to get too high, we may have to move the AP stats online.
It was just interesting. We just went on a college visit and they were talking about stats came up. I don't even know how or why, but the admissions counselor is like, I think everyone should have to take stats.
I agree.
Yeah, we're all analyzing all the time numbers, whether you're an English teacher, a math teacher, a, you know, every job.
Most practical of all the maths, regardless of what field you go into, you deal with statistics. I will say, if right now, there is this new trend with everybody like, and it's not just in Lewisburg. I read about it online, you know, like, you know, Calc PC is the new status. And, you know, so whether they're really like even love math, their kids, that's what they're driven to do because they think that's what I need to do. So part of it, a lot of it is changing perceptions with it. But this will be an ongoing discussion in the math department this year of what we can do to raise those statistic numbers because absolutely it is an extremely valuable. I mean, like you said, we all use it in our professions regardless of whether or not people even realize it.
Well, thought it all about. Maybe you have, and maybe it's not even the appropriate option, but a data analytics class? Would that fall in the mass?
That's, that's a lot of what math analysis is.
Okay.
Yeah. So that a lot of the skills and math analysis that Mr. Lu Pold takes is taking all of what the students have learned in their previous math and then seeing the application of that together. So they use a lot of real-world data. They incorporate a lot of statistical components in that. For instance, last year, he worked with a teacher. He worked with Mr. Wagner and, you know, they were collecting, you know, data and then Mr. Lu Pold's class was actually analyzing it. And it was great cross-curricular way for kids to see how their learning was connecting there. So they are getting it, a lot of it in math analysis. So it's just
That's great.
Yep.
Does the, the large number of students who are offsite just generally lower enrollments across all of the courses that seniors take?
Yeah, I will say that we've been kind of the exception. So certainly what you've got Central Columbia and Bloom and Danville that are practically in, you know, the, the backyard of Bloomsburg University. Mifflinburg, I would say fifty to sixty per, or only, they only have fifty to sixty percent of their senior class onsite. Milton has their own CTE program. So it's harder to gauge, but they also have a large ACE. And, and I think just as more, more families learn about the Learn about the program or they have friends who have done the program. They still have that flexibility to be able to do their high school athletics. The professors at Bloom are really accommodating if the student has. You know, a match or a game or, you know, some other, you know, thing. And I just think, you know, kids are really liking that. You know, those options and being able to have kind of the best of both worlds. And certainly you can't feed it in terms of the cost per credit. I mean, to be able to earn the college credits at seventy-five percent off, you know, that's. That's a big factor for families, especially in the second on it times that we're in.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I had a question, just in case I missed it. With the sun numbers, since that's such an increase, do you know if there's anything specifically last year that we did? Or that some did that made a difference? Just because that's a large jump in.
I would say that one of the things that has been extremely helpful that we are seeing the benefit of now. Is taking the, sometimes they've done it in eighth grade, sometimes we've done it in ninth grade when we have taken. The entire grade over and they actually, they have, the kids can sign up for two different workshops. And actually get to produce something. So they're not just watching other people work, they're actually. You know, they they come away with something. And and also as our enrollment has increased, I think, again, that word of mouth. You know, has been very important. I think certainly we're looking. You know, in in guidance of, you know, making like, you know, and not just in guidance and in our regular classrooms too of like. Hey, you know, you're really good at this. Have you thought about going to Sun Four? I think also we'll see with the Act one fifty-eight pathways, with that being one of the pathways to graduation. I don't know that we've necessarily seen the impact of that or that that drove anyone's decision. This year, but I think it certainly might in in the future. So I think it's just been a lot of efforts on a lot of different fronts. But I think absolutely getting everybody over there, having that exposure. And again, not just where you're watching, but where you're physically producing and creating something, it's been really instrumental.
For the biology for ninth grade. Did you have to shift around teachers for that?
So what, we're not able to offer forensics this year, which is a really popular elective. It either like elective or. A science credit for, you know, part of their four credits of science that they need to graduate, that's a semester. Class for this year because we're doing all of the tenth grade. Plus the ninth graders who want it. We did have to drop the two sections of forensics that we would have offered to be able to accommodate that. Next year, depending on what the numbers are, we should be able to put that elective back in. And since we've already had then forty students that have taken. The biology that won't have to take it as tenth graders, hopefully that'll even out next year. But we also could see, again. Perhaps more middle schoolers are like, okay, I'm waiting to see how, you know. This group goes and like, yeah, I want to do that in ninth grade. So that number could increase too, like maybe instead of. You know, two sections, maybe it's three sections. But forensics was the area and and that, that's definitely a loss. Of students being able to take that this year.
Any other questions?
That a computer science thing is a national trend, I think we're only gonna see that. I mean, we're high, so we might stay steady though.
And we're already, and there are students already who have taken. You know, there's one student that's doing it kind of independently. The the second AP Computer Science. And Mr. Leopold's just going to work with him individually to do it. And I know that that's going to be a request coming down the pipe, which again impacts. All of the math, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item is our only action item under old business. And just to remind the board and anybody listening at home, we. We approve new curriculum materials and resources. And because there are so many for this year, we broke that into two chunks. So we saw. The items that are before us in section four A. At our last meeting, and that's what we're voting on later under Board Information. New Business, we'll see some more curricular materials. We are not voting on those. This evening, unless we choose to, just as we could. Right now, we're just looking at the materials that we had already looked at, Mrs. Moser.
Okay, so you have the listing of, as Dr. Zimmerman said, the courses you've had opportunity to read and review. You'll notice the middle school Spanish one had a slight revision, a good catch. On on the part of our board member, just in terms of a word choice in the paragraph description. But it was important to revise it. I asked that we move these forward tonight with passage. Just because we're at this time of the year and it's good to be doing it.
Moved by Mrs. Stanton, seconded by Dr. Jablonski, any discussion? Now, roll call vote please, Paul.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unsequo Fisera?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Uh, that brings us to new business and the first item is the parent-student handbooks. We have the links to those here. And I'm told that the principals and collective now are responsible for this item. Does anybody have any comment on the handles? Or shall we just?
You had a picture of your faces right now.
Absent any.
Really good, you all looked exactly the same.
I will entertain a motion to approve these.
So moved.
Second, by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mrs. Haynos, discussion?
We save what, almost two thousand kids worth of almost thirty pages every year by doing it this way, and that makes me very happy.
It's also very easy to change because one of our, the very next item on the agenda is to change the calendar and that can just be changed. Instead of reprinted. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, I guess it will call vote, Paul.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unsequo Fisera?
Yes.
Doctor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried. Great.
And then the next item is the revised twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, Mrs. Moser.
Sure, I'll take this one. It was a board approved school calendar in February. And what was not present at the time on that when it was passed seems small, but it's pretty impacting. It was not drawn and noted in the key below the end of the marking period, each marking period of the school year. Upon catching that and putting those in, you see the calendar. John, I don't know if we have it, please. You see the calendar as it was, and if that's not the view you have. I can simply tell you, but the end of the marking period on the twenty-seventh of October. And the original date chosen for conference day, October two eight. Meant a scant single day between the end of the marking period, no time for report card preparation. And that's an especially intense effort where there are unique grade level report cards at the elementary level. And even time and opportunity to create those at the middle school and high school through the power grading and and the instrumentation that we use. So the principals had the good catch of this in one of our first summer admin meetings. Reconciling the idea of the end of the marking period and the very next day being conference day is is truly a logistical. Challenge beyond. Our teachers are very good K to five at scheduling individual parent conferences. They often take place through a series of days on and around the end of the marking period. There needed to be that time and opportunity to build that back into our school calendar. So it's a modest change, but it is a change. We are asking tonight that we make October twenty-eight a school day. And place the conference day Monday, November seven. That it accommodates that time and opportunity to not only prepare the report cards, but also hold those individual parent conferences. Be they early morning, just after school, early evening, we work real hard to make it possible. For all parents to be able to schedule and come. And and this works better within the mechanism of school operation, if you will. And while it is the time it is in August, we feel if we can get this up and out as the approved school calendar change. We can help everyone come to the awareness that this would be the better time for those things to take place.
So moved. Second, moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mrs. Stanton, any discussion?
Just advertise it. Because there will be, October twenty-eighth will be the most missed days, full day of the whole year.
The teacher service on the Monday and the. Conferences on the Tuesday. So if people were planning a long weekend but didn't make firm plans, they could still have a long weekend.
So you could look at that as the seventh with the conference day and the fact that on the eighth. That is a teacher in service day, it is already not a student day. So in essence, there is the realization of what you're talking about. With this particular arrangement.
The only other thing, doesn't that also help us with the election day?
That was Dr. Ball's good thought as to why it was just as good perhaps to not have the students in school with the middle school being a polling place. And just always, she strongly felt that that was an important piece. So again, we don't change that. We work. Out around that contingency and also try to provide continuity of instruction and education, let alone report card preparation. And conferences being held. Isn't that amazing? So that is the rationale behind the the proposed change tonight.
Any other questions or comments?
So are we saying we should or shouldn't flip-flop conference and teacher in service?
So I'm saying our proposal is to make the twenty-eighth the school day.
No, I'm saying seventh and eighth swap what those are. Is that a good idea or not a good idea based on what you just said?
Again, I think you're accomplishing the same thing. With the conference day on the seventh. And students not being in on it. Because the predominant number of the conferences are held in the days preceding.
I see, I got you. Okay. Did anybody say, we already moved in second?
We did.
Yeah.
I think we can take this by a voicemail. So all in favor of the revised calendar, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And that brings us, for what I really hope is the last time, to the health and safety.
Well, let's discuss the health and safety plan. It is the reality that we do need to continue to revisit this through twenty twenty-four. Because the health and safety plan is connected to the Essar, our monies that we all receive. And written into that mandate is review of our plan every six months. I I also hope that it becomes something somewhat more routine to simply review what we have. And recognize that we sit in good stead. John, if you'll put. The revised plan up. Some time and effort spent here in the last several days with. The need to revisit this, a couple of things worth sharing in the public, you know, review of this. Both the Department of Health and the Department of Education in Pennsylvania have backed away from issuing guidances. Issuing updated plans, thoughts and ideas. It really does reside with the individual school district. And the strongest urging on the part of PDE to pay attention to the CDC recommendations. So you'll see those pieces are the guiding piece here in our iteration brought forward tonight. It is with highlights in red as we could proceed down through and. It's a template, so the questions are already there and it's our responses, of course. To those prompts in that particular order in which they are. So the first question answered, and please note the bold face, dark print is our existing current plan. So this has been our response to the first prompt. With red being the changes that we are suggesting this evening. That we will consider the most recent guidance regarding the transmission of COVID nineteen in the community. We are so pleased that we've continued to operate in person, twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. That we feel this promise and assurance of continuing to implement the mitigation strategies. That we have in place and continue to have in place will certainly safeguard our students and faculty and staff as we continue to operate. So you'll notice the insertion of Center for Disease Control in the next paragraph. And then those contingencies, should it become necessary for us to operate differently. And we would not be able to access our facilities, we would look to utilization of telecommunication. Zoom to conduct business and those kinds of options that we have to still educate. But consider the other ways in which we can accomplish that. I included a longer piece to the top of page four. That simply again denotes where we're at at this time in August of twenty twenty-two. There is the movement of COVID nineteen to an already existing piece of state code legislation. What's known as chapter twenty-seven relating COVID nineteen to a status similar to all other communicable diseases. In Pennsylvania, and if you will, by that movement, we're saying we are going to recognize there is COVID nineteen. And we are going to work to provide access to education while recognizing that there is a contagious disease. And that we need to literally work through those pieces together in that respect. The only obligation now required of school districts is a weekly report. On Friday of each week, we must report our positive case numbers to a particular site here that's referenced. The Future Ready Comprehensive Planning Portal is the FRCPP. And it's actually where a lot of state reporting is is located. So that's the obligation on the part of the school districts. And otherwise, it's to follow the CC CDC operational guidance. I think it will be helpful for our school public here in the community to see that CDC guidance. And so it again, it's embedded here as a link and we'll post it on our webpage for ready access for everyone. Neither PDE nor the Department of Health plan at this time to issue any updated guidances for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So then you begin to see some strike-throughs. Previous language, where we had to have such contingency plans more explicitly stated. You can see that we had some text to the effect of what our transmission rate would need to be before we would consider. A switch to remote instruction that no longer needs to be in our plan. And so I noted that here for us tonight as we review. The second prompt that we have to answer to is how do we assure that there'll be a continuity of education? And that all services to all students' needs will be met. And so again, you can see here. We make a very broad statement that we do work to serve our students and support our students meeting all their needs. And so the date change simply reflects that it carries into this school year. The third prompt at the top of page five asks us then to take the individual subparts of the RFSR requirement. Those denoted in the left column of the of the graphic and our response to the right. And so again, you can see and read here some careful editing. I left a lot of the language as was where it seemed to still be appropriate. And noted with the red where, again, I believe we are currently now as we. Work to open this school year and move forward. So our levels of transmission, people can certainly opt to wear masking by personal preference. But masking is. But masking is recommended at this time, not required. And so there's language to that effect. Gone is the use of the three tiered criteria. Oh gosh, I've even forgotten it, something, something insignificant. Um and we're now into low, medium and high. The state's own choice language for the three uh degrees of the amount of community transmission or contagion at this time. So some of this reflects simply striking out significant and instituting the word high. Uh Dr. Ball in the iteration that we use here as our our one we're working from. Had carefully used both language, both both terms substantial or high substantial is gone. And now that category of the most community transmission is high. And so you'll see some of that here. In the language. Um what will still be important will be paying vigilant attention to the um transmission. And the contagion rate within our county. On page six, should masking be required? And then there is some contingency language there. This all remains the same as it has been. It outlines our steps of how we'll uh work with that piece. Should that become needed and necessary and. Oh, let's see. I would point out perhaps maybe to the top of seven, John. We know what has worked and what has brought us to the point where we've been in school and able to operate in school. We know that the good pieces that we have had in place have included a lot of effort to uh maintain. Appropriate physical distancing as needed and necessary, good hand washing and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and ventilation. And so you'll see a lot of what's in our plan is still absolutely appropriate. We um work to provide opportunities to be outside weather permissible. With be at class recess or lunch, we're certainly still stressing hand washing and sanitation. By everyone and in all situations across our buildings. We certainly are very pleased that we not only have the needlepoint bipolar ionization in place. But of course, we'd be remiss if we didn't point out at the bottom of page seven. With the completion of our construction project here in the coming weeks. Uh we feel the uh modern HVAC systems now in all four buildings will be absolutely critical for proper ventilation in our schools. If I take us to page eight. What you have here in the red is the current C D C guideline. Should there be a child, a student in our schools who tests positive? And that's the five day isolation. May return after day six with improved symptoms and fever free, wearing a mask until day ten. There is one other contingent point that I think worth mentioning here in our review. Um it is on the C D C guideline um as well. Reminding us that it is certainly the district's authority to exclude positive cases. In order to create the safe learning environment for everyone. I can finish reading with you or aloud with you, if you will, as you look at the balance of the rest of the document. Uh all these things are still important to maintain in our uh health and safety plan. And so that remains unchanged, if you will. At this time, we do not have tests to stay in place in our schools. Again, there is less need to have tests to stay. Uh it is still an available option. But it is logistically challenging, it presses and and our staff to be able to do this. And again, it's not had widespread utilization in our area, in our region. Um and so I did propose that that no longer need to be in print here in our plan. And then again, still encouraging, of course, the vaccinations. Still encouraging, of course, everyone to take best health precautions with their uh families. And and when not feeling well to stay home from school until they are feeling better. That's important as well. And then finally, the reassort of the reassurances that come. In all federal monies that again, all appropriate accommodations for all students with disabilities. All coordination with health authorities as needed and necessary and our assurances to that effect. I should stop and ask if anyone.
We need a motion to approve it and then we can begin just. So moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mrs. Stanton, questions, comments?
Um I, on page five, um under the universal masking, the third bullet. Um where we, you know, we had had for if four percent of the school's population had tested positive. Over a two week period, mask could be reinstated. Changing that, I recognize the four percent now, that number we kind of came up with for two reasons. One was, we didn't know what the C D C was going to say back in February. We knew they were going to say something, we didn't know what it was. So we put something in there and two, trying to stay under the percentage where the state could possibly shut us down if we had that five percent. In the school, neither of those two things are in existence anymore. Um so I wonder if that. First part is even necessary. I'm not super comfortable with just saying a large percentage because I think. To different people, a large percentage of COVID cases could be very different. Um and if we're not gonna like. Give it an exact number. We just say going by the C D C recommendations.
I guess that I I hear you and I was agreeing with you and then I thought of a reason not to, which is. It is conceivable that there could be an outbreak in the school that isn't really reflected in the community. Numbers and if we take that out, then the outbreak and if there if there were, you know. Fifteen percent of the kids in the school are testing positive for COVID, but the uni- union county is still in median. Then based on what's here.
Right.
No one would have the authority to require masks.
Okay.
So it seems like it keeps the option, it seems like an unlikely scenario.
There are no more unlikely scenarios we've learned, but um I guess I'm more comfortable with like a number. Like something that's a little bit more concrete, prescribed percentage. Is what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, do we have? I guess we don't have anywhere where like if it was deemed, you know.
The only other thing is people aren't formally testing their home testing, so there's a lot of, they're not reporting.
No, I know that, yeah.
Not self-reporting.
So we're just not even.
I don't know, I don't know where that takes us. From your question.
Yeah, I just, and my only thing is just saying a large percentage, I think is.
And I know.
Like that could. Lot of debate about what a large percentage is.
Do we just put it at what five percent was? Because in reality, if we have a five percent reported rate, it's probably like up fifty percent rate in the school. Because our rates were not hitting, like prior, our rates weren't even coming close to that. So I mean, we could safely put five percent in there. And probably never hit that because of the reporting, because of people not testing or testing. And then we would have something listed there, like I don't think we would, first, it also says to the superintendent, may, so it doesn't lock us into it has to. But second, um if if we actually hit that reported number, then I would be concerned, like we probably have. Like the whole school has COVID at that point.
But then isn't the large percentage what we decided is? At the end of the day then, or what the superintendent though said besides it is? Cause putting, I mean, you're you're saying five percent then is like, okay, but probably it's fifteen or twenty five or thirty five. But we just have no possible way of knowing that. So I don't see how we can.
I understand what you're saying, like philosophically.
Yeah, yeah.
This is not a philosophical document.
Yeah.
Fortunately. Or fortunately.
So in the previous page where the five percent was calculated to be thirty cases at Kelly and twenty five cases at. Lintown and Eiforn, et cetera, that gave you a sense of the size of the number. And then the the wisdom at the time in this iteration, Dr. Ball and yourselves as the board thought. Okay, so at four percent, we could try to stop. A spread, if you will, by bringing students back to masking in order to. You know, prevent a contagious spread, if you will, and not reach the five. So there's your numbers, at least in a context of what five percent would be. But yes, large percentage doesn't give you a specific, that's true.
Right, or maybe it's significant. And then it, that's different than large, five percent doesn't even really seem large, like really at the end of the day. Like in the in the worldview, five percent is not large. Significant is what we decided is.
What admittedly is an arbitrary number.
Right.
Right, that's the tricky part, no matter what number we say, yeah.
That you don't know the percentage you come up with is even applicable.
Right, right.
I agree, significant is better than large because people might think large is more than fifty percent or something like that. I think this seems so silly.
It is what it is.
Yeah. Monkey box, right? I mean, we just.
Yeah, don't even. Did you hear the universal?
Knocking on the fake wood.
Alright.
So do we need to?
We need, yeah.
Uh so motion, I I guess we, it's okay to change one word.
Can change like small, we can make small changes like that and then vote on it as. As discussed, yeah.
Yeah.
Am I correct about that? Anybody wanna think I'm wrong about that?
Do you want me to have motion to approve the revised?
Sure. Why don't we finish our?
Yeah, yeah.
Discussion. Is there, is there any other area that anybody would like to revisit?
So I have a question about the modifying facilities. Um so under the one, two, three, four. The fourth one, it says classroom seating will be three feet with masks during periods of high transmission for individuals who are not fully vaccinated. Um and I know at that point, there wasn't the approval of vaccination, like all the way down through our ages. But we're not doing any type of tracking of students I'm aware of, of who's vaccinated and not vaccinated, so I don't know that that bullet point makes sense to have in there.
Could we just? Could we take out the? The for individuals who are not fully vaccinated, but I I don't know if it, I mean, is it possible to seat people three feet apart?
Well, that was.
Reassembled and everything?
Are we making, cause I, I mean, I think that it's a great idea. But if we're not going to be like, somebody's checking, we're in high, we're gonna call the principal and say, hey, we need to spread out the seats. Like then we're just putting words on a paper.
We don't have anywhere to put them.
Yeah.
When you look over here and they're all going first bullet. Yeah, I think Tara's right. I think the first bullet in that section covers it. So I think we could just cut out bullet number four. I can take a strip. Is that?
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense.
Thank you. Any other? What I do like and want to highlight and see if everyone agrees is that I think what's sticky here is. Communicating with the nurses' offices about positive cases and getting clear instructions on following action. Which you've added. That's probably gonna be important. I think with people testing, not testing, you know, symptoms can be very mild. If parents are informing and it's suggested here that they should with a positive case or COVID-like symptoms. So I think we can all agree that that's nice language to have to keep families informed of best practices. Okay, anything else that anybody wants to comment on or? You visit?
Uh this is a little bit nitpicky, but down under like uh. I think it's E contact tracing. It specifically calls off the Omicron variant. I mean, we have multiple variants, so I don't know that. I don't know if you want this specific, I, again, I don't know, maybe just put other variants and vary. I don't know, because we don't know what's gonna happen next or whatever. Unless it's not important, but.
It's just dated.
Yeah, we've been there, done that.
I mean, really, that first bullet point was an explanation for why we were not continuing with contact tracing in the first place, so I think it could probably just.
To the start of the of the sentence, it starts with employees. Because the rest of it makes sense, employees and students are contacting people and things setting blah blah blah, just strike Omicron variant that people have reported. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. Okay. Um, anything else? I'm feeling a little confused about procedure.
Now we can motion for the revised.
Okay.
So motion to approve the revised. As revised, just now.
Okay. Moved, so moved by Dr. Jablonski, is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Hanos. Um any additional discussion? Okay, then we'll take a roll call.
Mr. He?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unser Fessero?
Yeah.
Doctor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Motion. Thank you. Uh and thank you to uh Mrs. Moser and to the uh principals who were involved in this and were taking this up yet again and. Bringing us something that I think will hopefully serve us well and not require. Much adjusting.
It will be posted on the website as edited here is posted tomorrow. The state does not want to receive it. They want to know that we posted it and made it available within uh our district community. The timeline to begin to report on Fridays into the portal is actually an August date that predates the start of our school year. So I'll begin to file that weekly report, obviously, in line with our school calendar.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um the next item of new business is the twenty two twenty three cyber insurance corps, Dr. Fairchild.
Uh yes, um so it's that time of year again where we uh need to renew our cyber liability insurance. Um and as you can see, our incumbent carrier Chubb, uh our cost, the costs have gone up a little bit as lots of costs are want to do these days. But Chubb still represents the best value. Um we did get comparable quotes from Coalition and an indication from Cowbell. Uh Coalition's deductible is fifty thousand, so that's higher than the other. And again, Coalition and Cowbell came in uh higher than Chubb. Hiscox and Beasley both declined to quote there, we are implementing multi-factor authentication, we're in the process of doing that. They want us to have it fully implemented up and running before they're willing to quote, so maybe next year, they'll be willing to work with us. But um again, this evening I would ask that you approve the proposal from Chubb. So that we can go ahead and renew our cyber liability insurance.
So moved. Second, moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mrs. Stanton, any discussion? Uh we'll call vote please, please. Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unser Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. He?
Yeah.
Motion carry, thank you. My last item of new business is the replacement of the Kelly outside clock. Um and nobody has identified as responsible for this.
I'm sorry, that would be me.
Okay.
My apologies. Um so yes, unfortunately, back in pre-COVID times in twenty nineteen, the clock. The big clock face on the outside of Kelly Elementary, unfortunately, that was installed in, I believe, the ninety three renovations, the clock mechanism died. Um we thought it was maybe um able to be repaired and then a little thing called COVID happened. And uh unfortunately, we just heard back from the company that we sent it to for repairs. And they said, oh yeah, by the way, we weren't able to repair that, um we threw it away. So I, oh, okay, thanks for letting us know. So um we do have a proposal. Uh here for the replacement of the uh mechanism and the arms and syncing the clock in with our. Timekeeping system and actually, believe it or not. When the clock was dismantled and taken down for repairs, we actually heard from a lot of folks in the community who are very concerned. The clock had disappeared from the side of Kelly. So we would ask that you approve this this evening. So that we can return the clock face to the side of Kelly Elementary and folks driving by in hospital drive will know what time it is.
Wow. This is the most expensive gift to the community I've ever seen. Well, it's a very large clock.
I know, but.
Plus the pricey install.
Is there a uh motion to approve this? Okay, moved by, um, Mrs. Kraus, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Lyon, discussion. I, I'm just wondering about the, the people who were supposed to repair it, threw it away, could not the hands have been, like, is there not?
There not any salvage?
And they were gonna look at it, see if it was salvaged. And then throughout the course of everything that happened, I continuously tried to contact them when I finally were able to get a hold of them. They either lost or threw away everything, so I couldn't get it back. That was one of the things that I asked them, if I have the people to get the stuff back to see it versus just not having it. And that's when they let me know that they didn't have it.
Do they acknowledge that they had it at one point?
We, we sent it away with them, so they can take it and repair it.
So they.
They, they dismantled it and took it back to where the shop is, so that they can try to repair it.
And they acknowledged they had it.
Then it sounds like they should replace the pieces that they lost.
Yeah. It was already broken, so yeah, I mean, I can ask them, but.
So this comes with just being the whole person in the room with that. Kelly said, yes, the original install was with the ninety-three, but the minute hand. I believe was repaired at least twice. While I still was at Kelly, um, so.
Are you speaking that maybe we should consider a different clock company?
Or do we really need a clock on that?
Where is the?
Building?
So I mean, it's on the outside of the building that faces the road, it's, I, seems like we've managed to.
It's an awful long time without one.
I mean, there are no numbers. Actually had an educational purpose, but it really doesn't. There are no numbers. What's there right now, just a? For where it would get.
Yeah.
Can we get clever and turn it into a subwoo?
Let's do it. Right?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, sundown will work in.
I'm kidding.
I mean, are you guys horrified at the idea of not, okay, that seems to make it.
I mean, if y'all, I, we just bring it to you, some folks mentioned it.
Alright.
There's no like memorial issue with.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while, I think it's been a while since we've had anybody complain, so I mean.
Cause it hasn't worked in a while. I think we, I think we've decided. I write that road all the time, so I will not.
Having, uh, having moved and seconded, we do need to vote on it, so, um, uh, roll call vote please follow. Mrs. Kraus? No. Ms. Lyons?
No.
Ms. Stanton?
No.
Dr. Unser Grifero?
No.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Nope.
Ms. Hamers?
No.
Mr. He?
No.
Dr. Jablonsky?
No.
Motion not carried. That was very exciting.
Yeah, we'll just fill in the hole.
Um, that brings us to new business and the first item is the additional new curriculum materials for this upcoming school year.
Sure, that, that's easy to say. Here's a longer list than the first group that you had your opportunity to review. I am excited, uh, as Paula's already referenced tonight, they represent new courses. They represent rewrites of existing courses with enhanced instructional activities. Um, our math classes in the middle school. Intentionally articulating STEM-based learning. As well as a science revision in grade six for enhanced STEM. Uh, Paula referenced the Spanish for heritage speakers. The English Language Arts Course for ELL, the AP Seminar, uh, is here for you to review. And again, all told, between the first group and the second group. Our teachers have been busy this summer, this represents thirty-five courses that have come forward to you, uh, for consideration. So again, information tonight to tell you, here's the second group.
Is there, um, uh, any need, is, is it okay to wait till the next meeting to vote on these?
We reach this point each summer and we usually decide that your level of comfort allows us to say. If you are willing to do it in a single meeting and approval. We know we're opening school, we know we want this to, you know, proceed. Uh, our own policy does say it will have the board's approval at this level of the course overview. Uh, we have suspended the two reading approval in previous years because it's August and school is coming quickly. I would certainly support that.
We have motion to make it a voting item or just motion to approve? I think we should probably move to make it a voting item. Seconded by Dr. Unser Grifero, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky, any discussion of making this a voting item? And then we can take that by a voice vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then I would take a motion to approve the new, the second set of new curricular materials.
So moved.
Seconded by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Mrs. Stanton, any discussion?
I didn't have a question and I don't know if you'll know the answer to this, but the, so the grade eight family consumer science has. That they review personal finance and then the sixth grade BCIT new class is personal finance, I just wasn't sure if there was some discussion on whether that's like. The same personal finance or a different topic.
So each will use the topic, they actually sat and collaborated and designed their course overviews together, which is great. Ms. Hustler and Mr. Lebovetsky, as I've been practicing his, uh, name. See how to work together, neither class. Meets all year long, and so there's abundant topics in financial literacy for middle school age students to begin to appreciate. There is also an eleventh grade personal finance course, but again, it's developmentally appropriate to be, you know. Uh, what's middle school, what's high school, what she can accomplish in sixteen scant total classes in FCS while she's also. Uh, covering the other topics, teaching the other activities. He sees the students for one semester, but only on a frequency of twice per site, six-day cycle. I can tell you that it was planned purposefully to not be repetitive, but rather to complement.
Okay, let's just all admit, repeating it is not a.
Are there other questions or comments? Okay, then, uh, roll call vote please follow. Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unser Grifero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hamers?
Yeah.
Mr. He?
Yeah.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, and thank you, convey our thanks to the many teachers who have worked so hard to produce all these things. Um, the next item of new business is the Endotherm Program, um, for energy savings, uh, Dr. Fairchild.
Yes, so, um, you have before you, uh, the information related to the Endotherm Program. Uh, last year, we actually participated in a free trial of this program at Kelly. And you can see the results there and it doesn't look like a lot of money, but those are actually savings that we would, uh, accrue. If we had paid for the product, which we did not, because it was a free trial and free is always a good price. Um, so the savings are even greater there. So, uh, what Endotherm does, it's a chemical that goes inside of our, uh, it goes inside of our boiler system. And basically it makes the water, uh, travel more efficiently through the pipe, so it doesn't require as much energy to pump. Um, and it allows the water to hold more heat. Um, so it requires less energy to heat the water and less energy to pump it through, so that results in energy savings. Um, and as you can see, our tests last year at Kelly, uh, resulted in energy savings. So we would, uh, like to bring this back to the board next time for your approval. Um, to implement it across the district, especially now that we are moving to, uh, hot water heat at the middle school, moving away from electric heat. And so, um. Part of this was the quote from McClure, who are currently working on our HVAC system. They would work to, um, set up the necessary components at Lindtown and the middle school. And introduce the chemicals there and then the folks at Guardian who provide this endotherm chemical. Would put it in at the high school and then they would also be the ones providing us with the three-year agreement. Uh, to test and monitor and keep up the levels of endotherm. Uh, Dr. Jablonsky had a very good question, how long does endotherm last? Um, and so we reached back to the folks there. Typically, uh, it's anywhere from three to four years before you see an appreciable decrease in the efficiency. The contract does include topping off the endotherm, if you will. Each year in each building as necessary to keep it up to the levels that, uh, are optimal. So, um, in theory, it could last us for many years to come. Um, and again, the, the maintenance contract is what not only puts it in at the high school, but also tops off all of our four buildings. So that we keep those efficiencies and we do see the savings, uh, in the energy.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, um, for John and then this will come back to us at our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, if there, if anyone has questions in the interim, of course, you can certainly reach out.
Absolutely, Delver and I would be happy to answer them.
Great, and then the next item of new business is the grooming machine for the baseball and softball fields.
Yes, so as you know, um, we. We are finding ways to work around our staffing shortages. Um, we now have implemented our line painting robot, which I am told is really, really neat and does a bang-up job in about a third of the time. Um, Delver has watched it in action, slick, I believe, were its, uh, exact words describing said robot.
I drove by, maybe you were operating it today, she was after.
Okay, so maybe our maintenance department's having a little too much fun. But we have another opportunity here right now, uh, when we drag our infield, uh, at both baseball and softball fields. We use manual drags that we call behind the gator, takes two people to hook and unhook, load, move them around. And when you drag the field, you're literally just moving dirt around. Uh, well, this, uh, grooming machine by ABI, um, is a one-person ride-on grooming machine. Uh, so it eliminates the need for the extra person to help take on and put off the, uh, the drags. But one thing that this ABI model has that others do not is it has laser leveling. And what this does is. It uses lasers to determine what the slope of the infield should be. And then it will move dirt around as you drive around to make sure that the slope of the infield remains where it should be, so the water runs off. So that we don't wind up with puddles and other hard areas to drop. Um, and again, we've looked, uh, most other companies just sell the drags that you attach to other equipment. Toro does make a infield grooming ride-on mower, but does not come with laser leveling. So again, if there's a divot or a puddle or something, your, um, your other models are just going to go over it and exacerbate it. This is actually going to move the dirt around to keep the angle so that the water runs off, so that our. Brand-new, better drainage baseball field stays in very good condition. So, um, again, happy to answer any questions this evening, we'll bring this back to you at a future meeting for your review.
Will there be a? An agenda where we don't talk about spending money on baseball? The problem is, in my opinion, is you're gonna have this at one field, but not the other.
It'll go back and forth on our handy-dandy trailer.
Yeah, so I've actually been kind of planning this. A long time ago, that those of you that have been here, you have brand-new rail turns, you have a really nice new trailer, I've got a lot of new stuff. You guys can improve building parts left here. All that has kind of been, not, not necessarily, this is the permission of the farm, but it's just another add-on part of being able to be very mobile with our maintenance department. To be able to get to all fields. Um, we do have two areas, we have one area falling, one area over here, the most people we have to take care of. We can load everything onto the trailer and we can move it, so the plan for this machine like everything else, is to not only utilize it, but also take it over to softball field and utilize it. Even when we have the third softball field, put it over here for the ghost team, we'll be able to do it here as well. So it's definitely something that I'm looking at, what we can utilize to make sure that we utilize it in multiple areas, not something that's just like, you leave it here, it's only here, there's no more else. Right, we're trying, I'm trying to make our maintenance department a little bit more mobile. To make it easier on them, but be able to do stuff more efficiently and faster, so we have a foundation.
Do we have storage space for it or do we need to purchase another shed?
We do actually have, um, storage shit at, for now that they're really giving us anything.
We're gonna get you one of those pop-up things.
If we had a grooming machine, as such as you described, that did not have the laser feature, which presumably is part of what makes this expensive. What happens when there's a divot? Like, does somebody have to go out there and manually?
You, you have to manually go out and figure out how do we keep the dirt at the two-point-five percent slope. Um, so you know, you, you'll be out there with a rake, you'll be attempting to eyeball it, that sort of thing. And actually, the laser component isn't really that expensive, um, on, uh, on the quote, I think.
Because what we, what we tend to run into is the screen, which is so wet. Trying to get the field drained, playing is where we run into issues. And that's where spending, you guys have proved, spend money to get the drainage done correctly on the end of the outfield. Um, the way it's hard to describe it for me is you're gonna go from. Being able to drain a half an inch an hour to fifteen to twenty inches an hour of rain. Which means the rains five inches on Sunday, we're still to do it down. This machine has been allowed to keep that two percent or two-and-a-half percent rate on the infield. Get the water to run off, to allow it to go where it needs to go in order for it to drain. If you don't do that, like Jonathan, you can eyeball it and then just run our manual, um, drags over. We're gonna get the field where it looks like it's nice and flat, but we're not gonna get that slope and then that's where you get the water to sit and pour. And when it sits and pours, the field doesn't dry, that's when you have to use that, and that's the time, that's your man hours. Try to get that field dried out and all of this kind of trying to work in units and each other, just get your field dries quickly and make sure that we can put on that field. I know that's a big, a big thing to make sure we can play on that field. I, I understand, you know, that, that we're not, not gonna spend on that, moving to the significance of each of the districts. I wanna make sure that, you know, we're refined and everything to keep people on our fields. So it's gonna help us a lot during this season to try to get that a little quicker.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. Is this the only company? That sells this equipment?
As of right now, yes, it's only, as we, if we don't have a, a post-arts or state contract with, without socials, that is the only company right now. That, that's like this type of issue. And John, earlier, there's a four machine that's arrived on.
And how much is the Toro? And if, I apologize for my baseball not. Great knowledge, so if it's not at that, at that angle, can it not be played on? Or is it just more likely to have water and then that?
Over time, yeah, over time, we're not gonna, we're not gonna keep the slope and over time, the, the water will sit and the water sits, stay muddy.
That, right, that's when it becomes unplayable and stuff.
If you drag, if you drag it without something like that, then over time, you're just gonna undo everything that you're doing right now. That part's true. It, the amount of money shocked me and I asked a ton of questions earlier, but I can't argue with what they said. And you have to have that slope of the water where the infield won't grain, which is the problem they have right now, the water just sits on it.
So that's a lot of sheds.
It is a lot of sheds, I, I don't disagree.
I just want the tall part of the laser leveller to be able to angle or something, so it fits in an existing shed.
And even once the field is fixed, we'll still need that.
Yes, this will maintain.
This will maintain what.
So the rain doesn't undo what we just paid to fix.
Okay.
The fields are grown multiple times, like every time.
And I mean, cover, cover, they're, they're doing info now, they're, they actually have two of the machines, I'm assuming at least one of them can be out here. To drag and do this, they, they, they have, I, I've talked to guys from under the world, and that's what they, they use. And they, they actually can celebrate. Baseball fairly highly of the machine, um, as well, and they're, and that's, they're gonna use.
And it's not something that. One would like share with other districts and rent or something? I mean, surely every district has this, every district that has a baseball field has this need. Would it need, I mean, I suppose in season, it would need to be used so regularly that it wouldn't make sense to share it, but. Like, so is, would there be an option to?
That's definitely an option, I, I will tell you, no, I can't sit here and say, no, I want to create it, I mean, that's definitely not.
The money's right. I'll run it out.
Could we explore that? Just, it would be nice if we could have this, but not have to pay the full price.
You can, you know, other folks.
Would it work logistically that?
Just have to be like Milton and Miltonburg pretty much.
Yeah, that's, but also we'd probably wanna, this is ridiculous, we probably wanna own it and rent it, run it, because then you have to share repairs. It's like logistically challenging, renting is.
I don't even, I don't really know if that's gonna be legitimately physical. Cause in season, you've got baseball and softball happening on alternate days, you pretty much are using it every day. So if we're using it every day, when are we gonna?
Yeah.
When are we gonna?
How long does it take? I mean, is like an hour?
I've never, I've never personally used anything so nice, so I don't.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. In, in theory, it should be faster than the previous methodology, which was get the gator out, attach a drag, drive around, drag it. Unattach, get the fine drag, but you know, thi- this is all built into one, so theoretically, it should be faster.
Right.
Um, first of being tied up on this, so it's eliminating, since taking our man hours and bringing that up to be able to do it. Um, a good example, just to go back to the really cool robot thing you got me, the field hockey field only took three people about five hours. That's about fifteen man hours at a time. It took me twenty-five minutes to line the product. So we're eliminating a lot of man hours.
Yeah, I agree.
Field hockey field does a lot, has a lot of curves and a lot of angles. So to take a fifteen man hour job, take it in twenty-five minutes after we're rolling, that's really good, right? And that's kind of the same thing.
Okay, that's one question. What is the warranty or the like? That's all I wanna know. How long is this thing gonna last? And are we gonna be on the hook for really fancy parts? Yeah, let's.
We can get that. Yes, absolutely.
If they're the only one that has it, it sounds like highly specialized parts.
Yep, we will get warranty information. Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Good discussion.
So we're, we're, we are discussing warranty, we're not talking about.
I'm persuaded that the logistics of sharing.
It sounds like that.
I mean, I guess.
I just wanted to make sure Delbert knew what we wanted him to.
I would think that transporting it back and forth is gonna be some type of wear and tear.
Yeah.
Well, and that would put the man hours back into place. Somebody would have to like drive it to Milton and Milton.
No matter how careful you are.
Yeah.
A lot of money.
Yeah. If you feel inspired to have conversations with your colleagues in other districts, and if that yields anything, that could be interesting. But I, I see that that probably doesn't make sense.
Many more so will be, will be more like the spring baseball, because our baseball and softball, those are like
Right.
Um, and all of it is just beer and ice.
I think a key piece of information is how long it takes, cause if it, if it also only took twenty-five minutes, then it would be easier to imagine. But if it takes three hours, then I don't, it's obviously not possible.
And then you get into schedules and who needs it.
I wouldn't think, but I don't know.
I mean, I guess it depends how off the field is.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions on this?
A groomed sandy area that is handled by that might be less expensive than continuing to mow. You know, by a constant, per se, to removing the amount of grass we have, so.
I think we just have wild fields.
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the wild field.
I like wild field.
Um, all right, the next item is the board president's report, and mindful of the hour, I do not need to report on anything this evening. And I will um leave us right along to Mrs. Moser's interim superintendent's report.
Well, I actually prepared, I apologize. No, it's just, it's the right time to call attention with gratitude and appreciation. For all that's been going on here in the last two months, uh, the tremendous work across all building levels. Uh, you cannot state it enough. Um, those of us who are living under the McClure construction, those of us who see it every day. There is a tremendous amount of work being done by our custodians, Delbert and his maintenance crew, readying the fields for use. As we've already admired, Chris, the fall athletic meeting and the planning that it took to do that. As your first big opportunity with us, but Mr. Long has also worked with our counselors to understand our e-school program. That's coming under his oversight. He's been part of some of our first school safety planning, and we appreciate uh his involvement there. We've gone online with the automatic updates using the um forms that Mrs. Schwendinger put together. I'm happy to say tonight, eighty-three percent of our uh families have worked through those processes. And that's a real positive. And so again, kudos to her good work. For every new staff we have hired, Mrs. Young and Mandy Hetzendorf over in our offices have a host of tasks that they need to do to complete the HR process. I thank them for all of that time and their good work here in the last several weeks. I went with John and, and uh Mike Jones to the meeting with our Roar Bus uh company employees. Thanking them in advance for what is always their challenging work and, and trying to set things off on a positive tone. With everyone involved in transportation. Today, I attended the SUN ATI meeting with the other superintendents and an opportunity to work with Dave Barker. As he acclimates to that position of leadership at SUN. Our faculty, I can't say enough, Eric alluded to their participation and their leadership of professional development this summer. I in turn echo that same sentiment, as well as the preparation of the written courses and the resource materials that you've looked at. And finally, we are just two weeks away. Uh, and when you're at the two weeks to go, Mark. You wanna feel like we're taking care of all the details, where we're checking things off our lists. We're excited to be planning new staff orientation on Thursday, August eighteenth. And then traditional convocation on Tuesday, August twenty-third. And we have been assured, reassured, and reassured again, we'll be opening on schedule, on time. And with a wonderful H-back services in place across our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, board liaison and committee reports, does anybody have a um report on their committee or entity? Okay, then that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as it stands? So moved by Dr. Jablonski, sir second. Seconded by Ms. Lyons. Any discussion or any item anyone requires help out?
I need to hold back the minutes from the fourteen to, because I was not here.
You wanna just?
I'll do it online.
Item?
Yes, please.
Uh, okay, uh, we'll call vote, please, Paul.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes, with the exception of that item.
Dr. Unsecret Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. He?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Thank you. Um, and that brings us to director's comments, and I'll start over here with Ms. Lyons.
Um, just about the curriculum, obviously, it has been so much work. And you touch on the finance, the high school finance um course, which I think looks really great. The fact that it has college and career planning, I think is wonderful, cause I think that there cannot be enough financial education for kids. So to have those things pulled out as part of it is really fantastic. Um, also, I'm not sure if, who all follow Sun Tech on Facebook, but I just wanted to give a shout out to, they've been doing a really great job with um posting. Like all of their staff and giving little bios of them, how long they've been there. I thought that was really great pictures to see. Um, it's, it looks like it's including everybody that works at the building. I mean, they have the custodians and everybody, every day they post. I'm, I don't know when they're showing up, if they're multiple a day, but it is very neat. So if you don't follow SUN, I would suggest following it, and it's good to kind of see the write-ups and how long people have worked there and people that are alumni and come back to work there. I think that's been really great. Um, also, last night, um, to give a shout out to Jen Schabeh and the other parents of LA MA. Um, they did at the campus theater, the um, they showed the Les Mis production, which was really awesome. It was just a really cool experience. Me and my son went down, um, just to see the students coming in, people that are gonna be going away to college. Some people that are coming back this year and their parents to see that. It seems like it was a really good experience, um, and something that they're hoping to continue in future years. So I just thought that was a really awesome thing for the students to have that and to see it on the big screen and to have it set up with the refreshments and everything. So I thought that was really great for the parents to get that together. And that's all I have.
Thanks. Ms. Stanton?
I'm really sad. I missed that. It was really neat.
That sounds like it was really amazing. Um, I also, as you were talking, Ms. Twistle, about um the parents group actually getting all of the um supplies. I was thinking that just today, I was like, oh, this is about the time where I started scrambling around looking for that list. And then I couldn't find that list, and so I'd post on Facebook, what's that list? And then somebody would tell me and we would run out and look for things, and it would be half, almost everything would be gone. So that's amazing. I'm so glad. Um, that's really lovely for a lot of reasons. That's really lovely. Um, and you know, just sort of looking at the new courses in particular. Um, I was just really pleased to see the Spanish for Heritage Seekers, Speakers and ELLA for ELL. Um, I know we've had a lot of discussion about trying to get classes like that in mind, so I'm just really pleased to hear that. Um, you all just sound like you're on top of everything, and I'm grateful for all of you and welcome.
Um, I'd like to share Paula's enthusiasm for what sounds like a great new team. I just got kind of chills hearing you describe what's, sounds like a feeling of energy. And of course, we're gonna miss people who have left, but at the same time, to have filled all these positions in such a short period of time. I can only imagine the time that you all put in interviewing, processing, debating, and making these really big decisions. So thank you for that. I wanna echo what Mary Ann has just said about these extra classes in support of heritage speakers. And ELL students, I know from working in that area, that there's just that scaffolding. That will be provided by, by these classes is huge. You know, I've tried to get students through a regular eleven and twelfth grade English Language Arts class. With so little English speaking ability, and this, I'm just, I ditto what you said. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Kristen?
Yep, I um too would like to welcome you, Mr. Long. Um, I was in the audience on Monday night last week when you welcomed all the parents and students. So thank you, um, you did a great job. It was wonderful, and um, we're super happy you're here. Um, I am so excited that the AC is all on time. And we look to be starting on schedule, or at least if there are little back orders or whatever, we have fixes and everything looks um good to go. I think the middle school coaches deserve a huge shout out. Um, ball coaches, cause they have had to kind of change a little bit with our gym and locker room not being quite ready, open on time. So they had to do some quick adjustments. Um, so they deserve a little extra credit there. Um, I too think what the um PSA has done with getting the supplies for everyone is amazing. Um, we gave it a go a little bit at the beginning of last year, and people seemed to like it. And um, it was not quite what we imagined. And then this year with um Chris and Eric with your support, it's gone full throttle. And um, I just think it's amazing. And with a kindergartner and a fourth grader, I'm super happy to not be looking for things in Target and Giant. And cause I too am usually at the end when all the things they need are gone. Um, and also, I, lastly, I too um think it's amazing that our um Sun Tech numbers are going up. And um, you know, whatever, as Jamie asked, and Paul, as you noted, anything we can do to kind of expose kids in eighth grade, ninth grade, whatever it is. I know last year, I think they came to the schools, right, instead of them going there, and any of that stuff is um, is great. And we should forge ahead and keep doing all of that. So thank you all.
Um, Jamie stole my comment about the Les Mis. Um, I got invited because McKinley and I had missed, and we are avid musical goers. And um, so I invited some of my other family and they all declined. And so um, another friend went with us, and to say blown away is an understatement. So I'm so glad I got to see it, A, because I've seen those kids since they were little, heard some of them sing since they were little. And I can, I said this to my daughter today. I said, I don't think I've ever been to any high school musical or a performance where at least one person was kind of like, oh, they're doing a good job, nice try. It's not even at all last night. I, I was, I, I was amazed, and that is not an easy musical to put on. So kudos to the music department. I know we have a great music department. Everyone knows we have a great music department. But the vocal department, I don't think sometimes gets enough credit, and wow, so very exciting. It made my daughter, like, I wanna do musical, and um, it makes me happy, because that's something my other kids haven't really done. Um, so awesome to that. And I really, whoever did the videography also, wow. It was, I'm, it was like watching a movie. It wasn't like watching a musical, except that people were clapping. I was like, oh wait, why are you clapping? This is a movie, stop clapping. But it was, it was awesome. Um. Also, it, it, just another couple of things, Sun Tech, this is awesome. I, I really have said a million times, even when Mary was on the board, I don't think the kids know what a gem that is, that they have that ability to do that. Um, our air conditioner has been on the fritz off and on all summer. The gentleman came to fix it at six-thirty the other morning. And I apologized to him, and he said, no, we're working ten-hour days because we do not have people. We do not have anyone that can do this. They don't have the certifications, or they come and they don't wanna do it. So, you know, I wanna shout to the rooftops, any kids that have this type of path. Um, that are, that have this ability, take advantage of it. My gosh. They, when they're done with school, they'd have a job. I, I, I mean, it's not just one company around here that's hurting for the trades. It's, it's everywhere. Um, thank you, PSA, again. They always um come through. And I appreciate to see the funds that are, are, you know, raised during like the dragon dash and things being spent for the kids and for the teachers. I know it's a, it's a help for both. Um, and I'm really excited to hear about some of the new classes and that kids are taking advantage of them. And that progressively taking advantage of them, so I'm, I'm glad we're doing that. And I don't think I've ever been on the board where it was any ass go down. I was one to note that, but I do appreciate the discussion and the forethought of, we, we don't spend money haphazardly here. Um, we, we try to work and make sure that every cent is, is meaningful. Even with baseball field, you know, it's, it's, we know the importance, but it's still sometimes hard, hard to swallow to get that much money to something that might not benefit everyone. And last but not least, I've been on some college visits, and it's awesome to go to some of these schools and say, we're from Lewisburg. And the admission counselors come and over to talk to us, to talk to us about Lewisburg. So we're obviously doing something right, so let's keep going.
Thanks, Karen. Yeah, I would echo everything uh everyone said, and I especially wanna amplify a lot of what you have in your comments. Because we shouldn't overlook how important this air conditioning situation is going to be. Where like everyone's having heatwaves all the time, and remember all the kids coming home with red faces and all the teachers kind of being just worn out. And obviously administrators as well, but the teachers in the hot classrooms being worn out, I think it's gonna make a huge, huge difference. So I'm just, you know, fingers crossed, and, and I can't wait to see it at the middle school open house. Um, and I also wanna give some kudos, my, my son runs, but he just started the cross-country casual uh meetups. And the spirit of like, everyone's just, the fact that it'll be ninety degrees, I'm like, no, I gotta get my secrets on, I'm gonna run it. And he's walking from our house to go, uh, there's something that, there's something magical that those coaches do that makes kids just wanna run an extreme heat together. Do more afterwards. They have this thing called um Trabs, Track Abs. I don't know, you gotta look into this. I don't know what's going on over there. But um, so the whole, the whole district kind of getting everyone back in this very, you know, we're ready for school, we've got the energy for it.
The beauty of going almost last is that everything's already been said. Welcome, Mr. Long.
Yeah, um, almost everything on my list um, has been taken, so I'll just, you know, ditto and echo the sentiments of others on the Spanish for Heritage Speakers. And the PSA supplies, and I'm really excited to hear we have three hundred student athletes, you said, that's a great, that's fantastic. Um, and, and then I just wanna echo Mrs. Moser's sentiments. And so much, so much work has gone in over the summer to getting ready for this school year. And, you know, you can just feel the excitement. Everybody's ready to go. I, I feel excited about the new, the new staff. And, you know, just, we're all ready for a normal, wonderful school year. And so thank you to you all specifically for your efforts and, and to all of the folks in the buildings who have gotten us to this point. And next time we'll get to hear how it's going. So it's very exciting. John, do we have any comments from folks who are online on non-agenda items?
Nope, no comments.
Okay, then I will take a motion to adjourn. Your second?
Second.
By Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Dr. Unsecret Fisero. All in favor, please say aye. Meeting adjourned.